3:00 PM, so we're going to call the Utilities Commission meeting to order. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Utilities Commission meeting of December 16th, 2013.
Public accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, moving right along, cash on hand and in the banks. Total cash on hand is $735,493. Excuse me, $735,493.78. Anything else that I need to say?
Yes. How was your report?
I need to get a payment. We need to do the payment of bills.
I'll move the payment of the bills for a minute.
My second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Sykes' report.
Hello, Mayor Council. Couple things since the last meeting. All town employees now have, and they will be wearing around their neck if they come onto your property, ID badges that identify them as town employees and gives you the department and their name, and they have pictures on them. You'll be able to identify that it's an actual tag because there is no lamination, there is nothing taped to it, there's nothing that gets put on it. It is a white plastic card with everything imprinted into it by a laser. So have some confidence in that, that if they show up wearing that badge, they are who they say they are. But if you have any questions, by all means, call Town Hall, and Town Hall can verify that yes, that is an employee of the town, and you can feel safe with them around the yard.
Have you ever had a problem with that?
Four times in the last 10 years. But it's enough of a problem for a person that lives alone, when you see somebody walking around in the yard, that we went ahead and cut it down. And we didn't just do the Utilities Department, we did the Street Department, too. So everybody that works for the town now has some form of ID. The Police Department, they do their own, and they're pretty easy to recognize, too. Grease traps. We, the council passed an ordinance about two years ago that went into effect this January the 1st, requiring grease traps at all commercial kitchens. Everyone has put in their grease trap, everything is functioning, with the exception of five. I'm in contact with four of those five, and they're in the process of having those put in. Over at the Lagoon, we had a 24-inch pipe at the wastewater treatment plant spring a leak because of a very small chemical leak in a fitting. It did not spill, it was contained in the concrete structure that the pipe ran through, and it has since been repaired. But it was a pretty intense ordeal for a little while. We were a little worried about it.
We have to notify the environmental people again over that.
If anything had spilled, yes, but everything stayed contained, and we were able to pump out and clean the concrete structure that it was in. It doesn't classify as a spill, more of just a containment. Couple of the calls that we've been getting due to the intense cold, no water in the house. A lot of people are leaving their part-time residences or rental properties that are vacant without heat. Those properties that do not have heat, the pipes will freeze. When they freeze, there is a chance that they will bust. So to anyone listening to this, if you have an unoccupied building, or an occupied building that doesn't have heat, you might want to turn it on at least a minimal setting, whatever your thermostat allows, 50 degrees, or have it winterized. Drain all the water lines, pull the meter, call the town, and we'll come pull the meter. If you have a meter in the yard and the lid is damaged, that allows the wind to circulate inside of the pit, and that will freeze the meter. So if you have a lid that's damaged, give the town a call, and while it is home on a property, we will replace that lid. We also had a couple of issues since the last meeting on blockages in sewer lines. Two main culprits. One is what are supposed to be flushable wipes, baby and other. There is no such thing as a flushable wipe. Baby wipe, personal hygiene wipe, paper towel, none of that is intended to be flushed down the drain, especially in Chestertown, because most of the sewer lines that are being used are over 40 years old. So a terracotta line is not going to take the same type of unintended solids as a new PVC pipe will, because when you get an offset joint, things build up behind that, and will catch on it. Best way to avoid that, don't put anything down the drain that doesn't belong there. The other thing that's caused blockages is plastic. Plastic baggies, the remnants of trash bags have been pulled out. Again, don't put anything down the drain that doesn't belong there. And we all know what belongs there, so I won't go into any details. Wipes do not, plastic do not, candy wrappers, chewing gum wrappers, pieces of cellophane, diapers, the wrappings off of cigarette packs, none of that belongs down the drain. We received back our second phase of biomonitoring at the wastewater treatment plant. For those of you that don't know biomonitoring, they collect a sample of our effluent, large samples, gallons of sample, and they take it to a lab, and they expose it to species of aquatic organisms that live in the Chester River, to see what the effect of our effluent is on the aquatic life in the Chester River. We had a 100% success rate. Nothing died. So we passed, we did good. Out of the bills, two major ticket items, because last meeting we had over a million dollars, and you'll see we dropped down to 735. We had to pay the bay fee, and we had a loan that was due to the State Revolving Loan Fund. Those two together add up to $225,000. And that's all that.
Questions or comments for Mr. Sykes?
Just freezing and falling, have you had more calls than normal for that?
We've had a large amount of calls for people that don't have water, or a pipe broke inside of a house that wasn't occupied. We've had over a dozen in the past month of frozen pipes and busted pipes and water running out of the house because the neighbor saw it because the house isn't occupied.
Including the, it used to be...
Whitehall.
Whitehall, yeah, I couldn't think of the name of it.
Including Whitehall. What happened there, I don't know the details, I know that the building wound up with a frozen sprinkler line, and that line broke on the second floor, and the water was running out on the ground from the basement. So all the basement that was below grade was below water.
Severe amount of damage to the house.
Looks like there was something on Flatland Road, too? Some type of leakage or...
That was the plastic bag. We had a blockage on Flatland Road, and we went around and we jetted the line out, and we found what was approximately two 13-gallon trash bags that somebody had put down the sewer. And the thing, when I say a candy wrapper, a candy wrapper by itself is a very harmless thing, except that it doesn't break down in water. And when it hits a joint, it stops, and that candy wrapper will cause other little things to stop. And that causes bigger things to stop. So you end up with a great big clog in the pipe, and then it gets a little pressure behind it, and it presses it, and you end up with a blockage. So you wouldn't think of something like that happening, but when you think about how many homes we have, and even if the likelihood of that happening is one-tenth of 1%, it's going to happen every day. And that's what we want to avoid.
Is the bay rest, how often is the bay restoration fee paid?
I believe we're paying that every three months.
Quarterly?
I think it's quarterly.
$52,000?
I'll verify that with Pat.
Okay.
I know what we...
$52,550.
For each connection we have, we charge, I think it's...
1350, I think.
1350 now?
Yeah.
Per connection.
Wow.
The pavement of Devon Drive in Coventry Farms, looks like that's coming along.
It hasn't yet, we have to wait for the blacktoppers to get rolling again. When they get going, I got to get Devon Drive done. We have about seven right now in town that we have to get done, but we should be checking those periodically to make sure big potholes don't form. Now, when you get runoff like this, they will form a lot quicker because of the splashing of water.
Right.
But we can take care of that as soon as we get a call, if it's not something that we catch first. We can take care of that within 10, 15 minutes of getting a call.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Message to the General Utilities Meeting.
Second.
Call those in favor. Any opposed? Okay, so we are going to officially call the Mayor and Council meeting to order, the time is 7:42. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Mayor and Council meeting of January 14th, 2014.
Move that we approve the minutes as presented?
Is there a second? Any second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Cash on hand and in the bank. Cash on hand is $2,106,522.33. We also have the Washington College donation for restricted use of $200,000 for a total of $2,306,522.33. So the next order of business is the payment of bills.
Prove that we pay the bills as presented?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That gets us to the next item of business, which is the Mayor's report on the Chestertown Revitalization Task Force. Looking out at the audience, I'm sure that many of you probably are here mainly to hear this report. This was, in theory, going to be a really exciting, you know, night for the community, because I had tentatively gotten the members of this task force to agree to finally come give their presentation tonight. But if you've been reading the papers of the last couple of weeks, you know that that is no longer going to happen because the task force is now dissolved. So what I wanted to do here is kind of give a broad overview of how we got to this point. So I'm going to start by giving a history of the task force, who was involved, what their mission was, where the implementation of this good idea became a flawed implementation, what the end result was, and most importantly, what do we do about it? Where do we go from here? So that's kind of the plan here right now. And I know this is a little bit different from the normal agenda order on a typical Mayor and Council meeting, but I thought this was a critically important thing to discuss, excuse me, right off the bat. So I apologize in advance to those of you who are used to going before the Mayor's report. And I'd also like to start by saying, God, the honeymoon period for this job is really, really short. So let's start with the formation of this task force. I think we all need to remember that while I think we would agree that this is a very disappointing ending, this started out as a very good and noble idea with the best of intentions. The whole concept was, because there are two property owners, basically, between High Street and the Armory, to get those two entities together and collaborate for a vision for what not only could happen on the waterfront, but also at the colleges holdings at Stepney, so that we can have a comprehensive plan that was done in one piece, emphasizing connectivity and development that builds out that part of our community so that it's compatible with what we already love and enjoy about the town. To that end, on January 11th, Mitchell Reese sent a letter to then-Mayor Margot Bailey, kind of outlining the concept, and the concept was that the college was going to have four representatives, the mayor and council would then select four representatives. The mission of the task force, and this is important to note, this, from the very beginning, this was a very broad mission that these people had. It wasn't just the waterfront. I think there's a lot of misconception out there, that they were just to study the waterfront. So I think it's important to read this entire paragraph. This was the directive given to this group of people by the Mayor and Council, and I quote from this document. "The task force will adopt a comprehensive view of Chestertown to include the waterfront from the foot of High Street to Rackliff Creek, the rails to Trail Network, both the existing spurs, as well as those that have been planned but not yet built, and the two business districts downtown and the two shopping centers north of Mordenec Road. We will also ask the task force to consider Washington College and how the students, faculty, and staff can make even greater contributions to economic activity and civic engagement, as well as the ever-growing number of arts organizations and businesses, to see how the development of this unique community can serve the future growth and development of Chestertown. Recognizing the limited ability of either the town or the college to contribute financing to build out what will be recommended, the task force will be asked to solicit proposals from private investors and to gauge the feasibility of securing state and federal grants and philanthropic gifts to realize the options that they propose." That is a very ambitious mission to give eight volunteers and ask them to do that in six months' time. Now, initially, this task force, the eight members were, representing the college, John Boe, who became the chairman, Chris Havermyer, Dicky Greaves, and Ron Athie, and representing the town were Al Missoni, Matt Tobriner, Linda Kuiper, and Rebecca Flora. I want to begin this by thanking all eight of those volunteers profusely for the incredible amount of time and dedication they put in to executing this task. From where I'm sitting, talk is very cheap. These eight people got involved, they committed hundreds of hours of their time, and they should be commended for the efforts that they put into this. These are not the bad guys. These people are working for the betterment of our community, and we need them. We need people like this going forward to be on our side. People like John Boe, people like Chris Havermyer. These are people with areas of expertise and knowledge, connections, and financial means, not only to view and visualize and plan like this, but to actually help us make it happen from a financial standpoint. And to lose their support because of the way this ended, to me, is one of the biggest disappointments of this entire process. From the very beginning, the task force envisioned themselves essentially as a private citizen group that was formed to make recommendations and nothing more to the town of Chestertown, and they acted as such. As you all know, starting in January, they conducted mostly private meetings, and one of the reasons that they wanted to have private meetings is because they knew they'd be talking to private landholders, business owners, and they wanted frank and honest opinions about what they thought was possible with their properties. Those are topics that often people won't come and discuss at a public meeting. So again, I know there's a lot of perception out there that these guys are conducting shady deals in backlit rooms, but that wasn't really the case. Unfortunately, from a technical standpoint, this task force actually became a public body by the letter of the law on January 13th of 2013, when the then-Mayor and council officially made a resolution creating the task force. By definition, because this group was put together by a public entity, they were, in fact, a public body, and should have been conducting open meetings that were advertised in advance with minutes that would then be shared and accessible to the public. The original scope of work, they were formed in January, the goal initially was to be finished in the June of 2013. I think a lot of suspicions were raised, for whatever reasons, when they came to the Mayor and Council and said, "Look, we have, this scope is too broad for this timeframe, and we want to push it back." And then they said, "We probably could come back to you in the fall." And then, when the fall came and went, and they still had issued a report, I think that raised some eyebrows, and why are these people being so secretive, and why is this taking so long? And to that end, on December 26th of 2013, a public information request was issued by the Kent County News, and opinion was sought from the State of Maryland, the Compliance Board, and I don't know the technical name, but they pretty quickly issued a finding that, in fact, this was a public body, and they should have been keeping minutes, and the public should have been informed of when their meetings are. So what I want to point out is that I, my personal belief, after looking at the record and the timeframe and the discussions that were had, is that this really falls on the previous mayor and council. It was their responsibility, and it is now our responsibility, when we create task forces like this, to make sure that the volunteers that are helping us are fully informed of their responsibilities as it pertains to the Open Meetings Act. And as such, any legal counsel that these eight members feel that they need should be paid for by the town. And that's kind of a big deal, because there's still requests that are ongoing, and this could end up costing the town a fair amount of money in legal fees if it comes to that. And that's really disappointing, because this was supposed to be an initiative to position us for economic success, and in fact, it could end up costing us a fair amount of money. Again, I can't emphasize this enough, I feel like going forward, what we need to do is make sure that from this point onward, every task force, every committee, we need to meet with their members and make sure that they have a very firm grasp of what their responsibilities are vis-à-vis this Public Meetings Act. So the end was disappointing. When these public information requests came, and they were requesting emails dating back several months, basically, we're left with a public group that had been acting as a private body, meeting with people that may not have otherwise ever met with them, and now they're being asked to share the minutes of those meetings with people that thought they were speaking off the record. So in other words, it's a pretty big mess, is what it is. It's a little disappointing because the report by the task force's own admission is incomplete. We have 44 pages of written recommendations. They did a very thorough job of making recommendations on a wide variety of topics. Where I think it's mostly incomplete is where you have one conceptual drawing of the waterfront, when my belief is that the ultimate vision of this task force was to give us multiple views of different potential outcomes on the waterfront. So in that way, the report is, in fact, incomplete, and because the task force dissolved, we don't have anybody to stand here and tell us how they came to these conclusions. And again, another reason it's disappointing is because we need people like this that are willing to volunteer their time. We need them on our side. So while I believe that the mistakes that were made by the previous administration were honest errors, that were not made with any malice or negative intent, we need to move forward. I think we need to use a little bit of editorial common sense here. Because of this task force, nothing has happened. Not a single property has changed hands, not a single nail has been driven into a single plank on any of these properties. What we are left with is a booklet of recommendations that we can summarily ignore if we choose to. So my point is that, yes, this makes great copy, but it's not Watergate, and it's not the Iran-Contra system. This was a group of citizens giving us recommendations, period. So what do we do from this point forward? As I said earlier, all I can do as your new mayor, and I've been on this job for exactly 21 days as of right now, is make sure that from this point onward, any initiative that happens on this waterfront, on town-owned property, will be done with the maximum public input that is practically possible, with the maximum amount of transparency that we can create. And that is going to begin with the approval from this council, again, with the dissemination of this report. What I would like to see us do, the report has been posted on the Kent County News' website, it's already been posted on SPY, it is live on our website, and because it is kind of a longish document, we also put a Cliff Notes 12-page version with just the bullet points, without the supporting literature, which is 12 pages long. So I would urge every member of the public to read this report that is interested, and I would like us to set up essentially a public hearing-style meeting where the community will be invited to basically come and give us your feedback. Let us know what parts you thought were very strong in the report, let us know if there are ideas that you thought were off the wall and that we shouldn't, you know, proceed upon. And I want your input, we need your input. And that is going to be step one, again, with the agreement from the council. That date, I would think, would be pretty soon, within the next, say, three weeks. We will probably, I would like all of us to be there, or as many of us as possible, so we may need to get back to you on that as we check our schedules to see when that could happen. And when that happens, it will be advertised, it will be open to the public, reporters will be invited, Dan, you can come, bring your little camera, and we will have a public sharing of ideas about what these people think, what the conclusions that they came to. After that public hearing, I suggest that this town moves immediately to start revitalizing the portions of the waterfront over which we have direct control. In talking to the various administrators at the college and their faculty members, and given the fact that the college has yet to launch a capital campaign, I get the sense that there still isn't consensus within the college over what they want to do on all three of their properties on the riverfront, and that's fine. And given the fact that no money has been raised, those initiatives are probably several years down the road. But we can't wait to continue to let our marina, for example, deteriorate more than it already has. So let's talk first about the Chestertown Marina. This marina was purchased by the town on May 17th of 2012. We need to move forward with rehabilitating this facility. We've had it now for a year and a half, and we really haven't done a whole lot down there. Partly that is because we've been in a terrible economic recession, and funds that normally would be readily available to towns like ours have been very low. But those funds are coming back up. When we start doing this marina process, we need to keep laser-sharp focus on why we own this marina in the first place. I work on the river. I am under no illusions that these people right here can run a marina better than a marina owner. That is not why this property was purchased. This property was purchased because in the private sector, the margins were so slim that the maintenance has been deferred for a couple of decades, and it's fallen into such a state of disrepair that no private investor in their right mind is going to go down and spend the money that needs to be spent on a business with very small margins to begin with. In theory, this town can access funds that a private owner cannot access. That is one reason why this, it's a little bit counterintuitive, but that's one of the reasons this actually might make sense if we pull it off. Secondly, this marina was bought to preserve public access to the river, access for people on foot walking through town, access for our residents that want to have boats in a slip or launch a boat, and equally as importantly, access for people that want to come visit our town by the Chester River. If this were to go into private hands, become condominiumized, and the slips privatized, nobody would ever be able to visit this town ever again via the Chester River. Let me repeat that. Nobody could ever come to Chestertown again by water. To me, that would be a tremendous loss, not only for our economy, but for who we are as a people, as a community. Thirdly, we want to preserve that waterfront because that is part of who we are. We were formed as an oil port of entry in 1706, and to me, that's part of our culture. That is part of what we do. We preserve our history, and that is another reason why we own it. So moving forward, I think we need to make this one of our top priorities. In fact, it should be the first domino to fall to start the chain reaction of revitalization on this waterfront. I've already spoken to Bill Linger Sol and Linda Kuiper, this is in her board. We need her. She's fired up, she's ready to go. We have $40,000 that we've been holding on to for engineering work to help us design this marina. And by designing, there are still some very difficult decisions that have yet to be made. There's some very obvious decisions. The whole thing needs to be dredged. It's terribly silted in, and we lose revenue on that. All the docks are dilapidated and need to be pulled out and replaced with floating piers. We need to fix and raise the bulkheads. Everybody would agree on that. But the most difficult decisions, I would like to hear some public input on. Do we want to keep the boat ramp? If so, where do you park everybody? Do we want to keep the travel lift and have this as a working boatyard, or do we want it to be more of a park-like setting? Do we want to continue to store boats there all year round? What do you do about parking? What do you... What do you do about working with the fish whistle? What do you do about the need for additional public restrooms? I could argue that these were some of the questions that should have been dealt with as soon as this property was purchased. I think I could make a case that we should have dealt with this before we purchased the property. But that's water under the bridge, and this is what I have inherited. But those questions need to be answered. So as part of this RFP, what I would suggest is that we schedule, when we hire this engineer, a public charrette-style of meeting with the engineer present, where we lay out the issues at the marina, invite the public to attend with the designer present, and hopefully, a design will come out of that public input. Once the design, the initial design is done with public input, then we post the design online and in the foyer and have another public meeting where we hear from the naysayers again. And try to come, we're never going to please 100% of this town. It's not possible. Trust me, I've tried. But we need to come up with the design so that I can go out and raise money for you guys. I don't know how much this is going to cost, because we don't know what we want to do. That needs to be the first step, and that should start right away. I'm hoping that we can, we'll get this RFP out, again, with everybody's approval here, tomorrow if we need to. That we can hire this person by early spring, that we can have an initial design done, hopefully by the end of the summer, that we can get more public input and have this design done at the latest by the end of this year. And then we need to aggressively go out and seek money from anybody that can fund this. We need to make amends with the county commissioners. They have to be on board. This is not just a town initiative, this is a county-wide initiative. This is a gateway, one of only really two major aquatic gateways, with Rock Hall being probably the biggest one actually by water, but this is an important gateway for the county, a $40 million a year tourism industry. This is important to them, and we need them to step up and support us, and I think they will. We need our state legislators to be on board. We need our federal legislators to be on board, and we need private citizens to be on board. If you're interested in this and you're willing to help, come to these meetings and give us your thoughts. Give us your donations. There'll be a lot of naming opportunities. You want to be here named after you? Let's talk. That, you know, that sounds kind of funny, but that can be a significant way to raise money for something like this. That would be a great way for a longstanding family with the means to help to leave a really neat legacy for their family or a loved one. Lastly, I want to set a goal of when this is going to be done. I want this to be done in my term as mayor. Not terms, term, within the next four years. And I'm setting an ambitious goal of wanting to walk Linda down to these piers and let her cut a ribbon in 2016. Get your pens ready. So that is the deal. That is my vision for the marina.
How old is the engineering study that we have?
That was done for free by DNR. It's just sort of an expression of ideas.
Okay. Well, as far as raising money too, when Secretary Gill was here and Mark O'Malley of Director of Boating Services and Kristin Saunders, he told us to get with Kristin to find out all of the resources for grants, not just Army Corps of Engineers. What was it, the, we're on the John Smith Water Trail?
Yeah.
And just find, has he gotten with Kristin?
Not about that, no.
Okay.
But we, the Ford Study Committee had all those sources in their final report.
Right. So...
That's going to happen, but we need a design. We need to have the document to show people what they're funding, and that's got to be the first thing that we do. And that's like basic fundraising 101. Secondly, I want to talk briefly about the waterfront walk. Much of this waterfront walk is going to have to be done in conjunction with Washington College. They made that part of their MOU when they purchased Armory, that they would provide easements through their property, and they've alluded to the fact that they would allow easements to the Algea Oil Property as well. And when the time comes for them to build, we need to make sure that they honor their word and that we work collaboratively with them to make that happen. What we can control is how do you bring pedestrians from the foot of Hyde Street through a working marina safely, and then do we want, how do we want to get that waterfront walk through Wilmer Park? Do we want to do anything extra than what's already there? And what kind of signage do we want? Those are the kinds of questions that we need to start answering very soon. So my suggestion for that would be, again, to have a charrette-style meeting. We actually have an NEA grant, which is mostly for a public arts master plan, but as part of that grant, it funds three charrettes, one of which can focus on connectivity of trail networks along the town. And so you could theoretically use one of those charrettes to talk in part about where we want this waterfront walk to go, and how to bring people safely there, and how do you make it pleasing visually with public art and signage? Maryland Heritage Area's authority. I talked to Gail Elings, who was head of our local stories of the Chesapeake Heritage Area. They would love to fund something like this. They give $100,000 grants for projects just like this that promote heritage tourism, and you can go year after year. So those sources are out there, so we need to identify them and start applying for grants to make this happen. And again, I would like to see, in conjunction with the marina rehab, a waterfront walk completed, as far as the town can bring it, into the Wilmer Park Pavilion by 2016. And then at that point, we need to work and stay on top of the college and make sure that it gets extended like it's basically been promised that it would. Lastly, if you read the report, you will find that most of it doesn't even talk about the waterfront. Probably 2/3 of it talks about economic development. What I think we need to do first, there's a lot of recommendations in there that are really wide-ranging, and it's kind of hard to figure out, where do I even begin with all these recommendations? The first thing that I feel like we need to do is reopen lines of communication between our town leaders and our business leaders. I mentioned this throughout my campaign. I think Liz had this as one of her talking points in her campaign. I simply want to start, in the month of March, having a monthly business forum where we invite different members of our commercial areas simply to Town Hall, whether it's in here or on the second floor, and just start a conversation and ask them, "How are you doing?" Let us, let them know that we support them. "When are you challenged? What kind of events does the town put on that benefit you, and what are some things that we're doing that hinder your ability to do business?" And if anything can be done collaboratively to improve that climate, tell us some of your ideas, and we can make reforms, beginning with those discussion points that come directly from our business leaders. They know what they need more than I do. I would recommend, starting in March, we start with our C1 Commercial District. In April, we have a similar session with our C2 Commercial District, our downtown merchants. We have one for our C3 Commercial Area. We have one for our Light Industrial Area. And then we have one forum where we invite, for example, the Economic Development Director of Vienna, or another small town where they have had a really nice turnaround, and ask them, "What do you guys do that's helped stimulate economic activity in your town?" And find cool ideas that we can emulate. So that's the way that I think we should proceed, the first step that I think we should do, to start addressing the economic climate in Chestertown. And that's kind of the end of my outline. So I threw out a lot of ideas there, and I hope I didn't blather on too long, but I would be really interested to hear feedback from the other council members, and hopefully we can start implementing some of these ideas.
I would like the Planning Commission to be at the meetings, the Historic District Commission, and the zoning.
Okay. I, what, I'm looking at our responsibility as mayor and council, and it says $8,000 for the conceptual drawing. I agree that the members of that committee shouldn't pay for it out of their pocket, but this is a joint committee. I can't see necessarily the town picking up the total $8,000. I think we should pick up four, and the college should pick up four. Now, we'll give them four, and if the college wants a reneg, let them live with those people that took it out of their pocket. But I don't think we should go more than half, because it is a joint committee. They have every bit, they're going to get every bit as much out of this Back to the Future as we are. So they should pay their fair share.
Yeah, that's a good point, Maureen.
It's a true joint committee.
I think I actually took that out of my outline, but it's a good point. These task force members, they, again, we only got one conceptual drawing. I don't know how much they were on the hook for, but they paid for that out of their pocket. Do you know the amount?
16.
They paid the full 16.
Oh, no, it was 16 total.
We had agreed, not me personally, but the previous mayor and council had agreed unanimously to pay half of the 16.
Wasn't it unanimously? It might have read unanimous, because I think I was missing, but I would have never voted for us paying for the whole.
I agreed with the match.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be a D-bed match in Bernadette, and I tried very hard to get the D-bed side.
So I thought they were only paying for the work that was done to date. So are you saying that the work was actually completed for the full amount? Do we know?
That is a good question.
Okay, well, whatever. I agree with the concept, it should be divided with the college.
Yeah, no, if it's an $8,000 bill, we pay $4,000, and then they tell the committee to go to the college and collect their other $4,000, because it is a joint thing. I suppose the college, I look at that $550 billion college up there, and they could probably afford that.
So where do we go from here, guys? What do you, can we try to set a date perhaps for the hearing on the task force recommendations?
You know, just from going to other forums on this, the other forums that I've attended, when they have a project like this, there's more than one meeting, and instead of it going for six hours or so, they limit it to maybe three hours a night and have multiple meetings. And what they started out as is having one every other week. I mean, it can grow, or it can, you know, settle itself pretty quickly, but I'm just going by what I've learned from other towns.
Okay. When is our next council meeting? Is it next Monday?
It's February 3rd.
Because this was moved back.
Right. So next Monday, we have one, and then the second meeting of the month actually falls on a holiday, so the meeting will be on Tuesday, the 18th.
Okay.
But the first public meeting that you proposed would be limited to the marina?
No, no, no. The first meeting that I proposed would deal with this task force's report. I simply want the public to be...
You're right.
Given the opportunity.
Comment on the report. Yep, you're right.
On any part of this report that takes a fit.
That is a large topic.
It's a big report.
Yep.
So, do you want to try to pick a date now, or do we want to do this in some other way?
The sooner the better.
How about Monday, February 10th?
Are you going to have it the same day we have a council meeting?
No, that would be the Monday in between. Finally.
Monday, the 10th? Where?
What time?
I would suggest 7:00, upstairs in this building. And the format would be similar to a public hearing, and that anybody that wanted to talk would be given a certain time amount, say, three minutes, to basically share their ideas with us.
Say it's 7:00.
7:00.
Well, I've read, I don't know whether it was on the internet or where, where, the chairman said he would not come in. Do we have a representative? Would you be willing to run us through that you were there at all the meetings, I understand?
No, not as long as...
Pardon?
Not as long as we've got this FOIA against us.
So if nobody from the committee comes in, we're just going to do it by...
I think mostly, my concept is that we're basically there to listen. Maybe we could give brief summaries of some of the bigger recommendations, but I just want to hear what people think about the report.
Everybody's got this. It's out there.
And we won't have any additional drawings. They won't be. So we're just going to listen to the public?
That is correct.
And the report's public.
Pardon?
The report so far is public. It's out there on...
We're not going to have anybody report.
We have, it's on the SPY. It's public.
Yes, there won't be anybody to give a summary.
It would be nice if we had somebody from the committee that would be willing to come in and say, "This is how we arrived at this decision."
I agree with you.
But that's not going to happen. And the conceptual drawing that we have, where is that?
It's in the lobby.
You're talking about the report. Is it? I mean, because most of these are generic...
There's a page.
Pretty pictures. Is it this one?
It's larger than that. It's got 289 direct...
I'll find it.
Can this conceptual drawing just be posted by itself?
Try and get it enlarged.
Yeah.
Are we in agreement that, where was I going with this?
10th?
Meeting on the 10th. Are we in agreement that we can send out an RFP to the engineer using our $40,000 grant that we have in hand to get that process started?
You're putting a limit of $40,000 on the RFP?
That's the grant. That's how much we have.
So that'll be in the RFP.
Yes, for engineering work on the...
Initial. That'll be in the RFP.
I guess, I guess we're talking about the same thing. I'd love to have somebody come in and tell us just what has to be done to make that marina, you know, I don't even care if it just breaks even. We're losing $50,000 a year in taxpayers' money into that marina. I would just love to see it break even, and have somebody come in here and tell us what to do. The concept of it being a park area is fine, but I look at marinas, it looks to me like a lot of their money is derived by storage and by repairs and other things. Can you just make enough money renting slips?
Can I just make a statement here? I sent out an email the other day, everybody showing that for three, for the third year, we've had grant applications in, which I think are going to get funded this year for dredging of $500,000, which is a critical need, and for dock and wharf repair of about $500,000. And I think we're going to get funded after this long period of time when no boater money really went in there to pay for these grants. I think finally, having our irons in the fire is going to pay off. We've also had a $100,000 Tier One Big Grant in, which I think was funded, and we had this $40,000, which I held up on the RFP for this because waterfront study, there was all sorts of indications that that was going to flip the, I think I said last June, flip the waterfront upside down. But I've written the RFP, and I don't, I don't think it's, if it comes in at $53,000 or whatever, I've written in the public comment periods, three public hearings with the public, that the engineer goes through, two in concept, one in final, to explain the product. But you need to also make a few decisions. You're not going to be able to have 19 different activities in the marina. It's not much bigger than an acre. So at some point, you have to fish or cut bait, not to make a pun. You are going to have to decide what activities will work in there and what won't. And I think that's sort of been assisted by this plan. No, you're not going to have somebody there to talk about all three, all 23 pages or all 32 pages of that plan, but there, a lot of it's ideas, and they're not brand-new ideas either. Hopefully, what the mayor wants to do is start a dialogue about the things that are in it, see how the public feels about those.
Okay, so, February 10th, 7:00, second floor. If you're interested in giving us feedback on the task force report, we are welcoming public input. We are going to send out the RFP to get the engineering, to try to hire an engineer to get the process of creating a final design for this marina. When can you get that RFP out?
The RFP is essentially done. It's being advertised for, what did we say, February 28th opening? That would be the opening for the engineering RFP. And it's for marine, people who've done marine work before. I'll ask the DNR, what are we improvement folks to look it over before we do it, but we will be advertising it right away.
Okay. And then the third part of my report was, is everybody on board with the concept of having business forums, one per month, where we invite our business owners to talk to us about the economic climate in their particular area?
Absolutely.
And if so, I don't think we need to set a date for that right now, because I wanted to start in March and let some of this work settle out. But if everyone is amenable to that, I will look at the calendar and we can decide on a date and advertise it. And the public are just welcome to attend to us as well. Billy, thank you for coming. Did you want to say anything on behalf of, not, on behalf of you as a county?
I'll give my own opinions on this. I stand behind Mayor Serena 100% and in your committee here. I'll support you in every way I approach. I'll support you in every way I can, I can't speak to my colleagues. But I read the report. There are a lot of good things in there. I came to see them die for some reason, as Ashley said. So, keep me involved.
Absolutely.
I will be there on the 10th.
All right, great. I'm going to hope to do that.
I'm just happy, this is the second meeting that we've had a representative from the county commissioners show up at our meetings. And that's very nice. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Chris, can you just clarify how frequently we'll be meeting or conducting those business forums?
My idea was one a month and would have at least four. Because there's basically three commercial areas and I thought it was a good idea to do light industrial. And maybe enough... And then a fifth one would be more to invite someone from a successful town like ours, like Vienna. I just love Vienna. If you've ever been there, check it out. They've done some great stuff. And basically have another town tell us what they've done to improve their economic priorities.
So, you'd only be... We'd only be meeting with business group three times a year, four times a year?
Well, we'll see. We'll see how it goes. I don't think this has ever been done, so it could be a total failure. But it could be awesome, too. So, if it works and it seems like something positive is coming out of it, then, you know, let's see how they go.
What was it town you liked?
Vienna, Maryland.
Oh, yes.
Is that where the paraplane is?
Oh, no. I meant to say Berlin.
Vienna's cool, too.
Vienna's very cool, but Berlin is more like us.
I went through that town. I didn't see anything really.
That was off the record, though. Okay. I'm not going to open the floor for questions because if you have issues, just come on the 10th and talk to us. I don't want it prolonged, so we have a very long agenda. I'm not trying to cut off public input. But I would like to move on to our next item, which is our police.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to present the statistics for December 2013, our last month of the year. This first section breaks down our monthly activity into percentages of time spent. And our first topic is administration, which is 3% of our time. Criminal investigations was 3%, accident investigations was 1%. We had 48% on vehicle patrol, 7% on foot patrol, 6% on training, 3% on court, and 8% on overtime. I took it upon myself to save a tree. I did actually make a mistake on the next line. Instead of 31 separate charges, please cross that out, it's 29. So, I apologize for that.
I puzzled over that for at least five minutes.
So, we had 14 adult arrests and they involved 29, correct, 29 separate charges. Those broken down into 16 CDS. And for your clarification, that's controlled dangerous substance or basically drugs. Our second to the highest was six FOA. That's four other agencies. As an example, other agencies have warrants. And when we make a stop, we run the person's history. And when it comes back on warrant for another agency, we may serve that warrant. We had three thefts and then we had one each of an ex parte violation, false statement to a police officer, FTA, which is failed to appear, and trespassing violation. We had two juvenile arrests. One was an assault, one was theft. And we had three civil citations issued, two for noise and one for litter. In our Part Two, our Part One offenses, we had nine. Four were cleared by arrest, one by exception. In our Part Two offenses, we had 12, cleared by arrest, were seven, and zero unfounded by exception. Motor vehicle citations issued were 40. Motor vehicle warnings issued were 136. And our red speed camera, which is out on 291, issued 255 citations. And we had two criminal citations. 255 is pretty much out.
That little motion camera on Lord Neck Road issued 255 tickets last month?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
It's one issue, 800 of them. So, we're doing great. It's down from 800 to 200.
People are paying attention.
Is that a state... That's a state road, correct?
Yes, sir.
It works. I mean, I've seen people come into town so much slower and so much slower going out of town.
I jumped to another subject and I suggest that perhaps I can introduce it next meeting. But I have my annual report completed rather than bombard you with too much stuff. We could discuss that. But looking ahead to that annual report, the annual violations versus last year are definitely down, which is a good thing. To me, indicates that people are complying, so...
I asked you this before and I'm sorry, I can't... You make the shift... You make the leave schedules out?
I'm sorry, I make the...
You make the leave schedule?
Yes, sir.
It just seems like an enormously high shift fill-in. I know people get sick or something of that nature, but if you're scheduling, you don't have enough people to schedule without doing overtime. You don't automatically schedule overtime, do you?
No, sir. And bearing in mind, the entirety of that overtime is 165 hours. So, 16.5, which would be, or 33 hours is 20%. So, we're only talking about 30 hours. And indeed, in the month of September, I did have several officers that were sick. I also had two officers leave the agency. So, we had to make adjustments with manpower shortage. So, again, it's 30 hours. 20% seems like a lot more, I guess.
Well, maybe if we could get a breakdown when you have shift overtime as to why it is. An officer's sick or somebody on vacation or somebody doing something. If we got a breakdown that way, it would be a little more clearer to me. It almost looks like, you know, when I'm doing schedule, I'll just schedule somebody in there overtime because it... But, okay. If you could give us a breakdown that way, I would appreciate it.
I could do that, yes, sir.
Chief, the police study committee, the police station study committee, their next trip is to Middletown?
Yes, sir. On, I believe it's February 6th.
So, that's a new date?
Yes, we are going to take the committee and I've already contacted the chief over there. We will be able to view the Middletown Police Department, get a tour, basically, so that we can get an idea of what a modern police station that perhaps would fit our needs better would look like.
And since this is the first meeting you've been to since that started, what else have you done?
We've had, I think, one other meeting and then an initial gathering or whatever. But basically, our committee has looked at the task of finding a new police building for Chestertown. And we've got two parallel paths. One is considering a standalone police building for the Chestertown Police Department. And as myself and the committee agree, I believe, we should take this opportunity to consider perhaps an overall public safety building in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department and the 911 Center and perhaps other entities. It's not an original concept. There are other areas that do it. And the advantage would be common savings. You only need one lobby, you only need one locker room, you only need one fingerprint machine. And we may very well conclude that that's just not practical, but it's the right time to at least, like I said, have a parallel path. And then the other point in the standalone building or the public safety building is, do we have a building that's built from scratch or do we retrofit a building that exists now? And those questions are not answered yet.
And you've toured both CPD and the county?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm leaving, what you've done so far.
Yes, sir. We have one meeting at the police station initially, then we returned here because it was kind of congested there. And then the second meeting we held at the sheriff's station, just so that the committee can see what our existing facilities look like. Okay, finishing up our monthly statistics, we break down the calls for service by ward. And in Ward One, that was 4%. And in Ward Two, it was 41%. Ward Three was 15%. And Ward Four was 28%. We had 3% that were outside of jurisdiction. Our busiest day on calls for service was actually the Monday in December. And our busiest time was between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. Like I said, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll have the annual statistics available. And if you'd like to have any questions or discussion, it would be at next meeting.
So, back to the speed track.
Yes, sir.
Is that a police implemented device? Or is that something that the mayor and council recommended that we put there?
That history was before me, but I believe it was recommended by me and the council.
The reason I'm asking is, I know it's a state road. I feel like that's kind of a de facto tax on us because the road is designed poorly to get you to go at the posted speed. I've gotten two tickets there myself.
I've never had any.
A couple of years ago. I learned my lesson, but I don't want to harp on this.
I always wonder about people who get two on the same road.
They're like four days apart and then you get the photo of your own.
You don't know that you got the first one in.
I feel like it's a very poorly designed road. You're going down a hill and it's a really wide road and you see the 40 mile an hour sign, so you speed up to 40, but you're still on the 25 and you get a $50 ticket, so...
I would imagine that is...
It's supposed to be a 40. It was a long time ago. It was a state law that, in school zones, and actually, we have a lot more school zones in the town that could be marked. They have to be marked. I think, is Centerville here tonight? They've marked most of their town with signs. So, I think you're right that there's something about Route 291 that's tricky. I think I'd like to see it a little bit slower all the way out.
You have to literally ride your brakes to get...
People are supposed to go.
It'd be nice if there were some traffic calming devices instead of monetary fines.
Your... This issue of the MML magazine focuses on speed cameras.
And Triple A is focusing on, too.
Chief, would it be possible to, I guess, compare Chestertown with other similarly sized towns just to see, in terms of statistics, when it relates to crime, how we're doing compared to other smaller towns, about the same size?
I think I could get something like that for you. There's something called UCR, which every town and every police department has to fill out and gather statistics. The trick, as you already alluded to, is comparing apples to apples. It won't be perfect, but based on population, you can get an idea of maybe what you're looking for. That's not a problem.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is Bill Erwood from the Recreation Commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's a pleasure to address the mayor and council. Thank you guys for having me tonight. I want to apologize, I was put on the schedule long before this became a much more involved meeting, so I have a few notes I want to go over, but I'll make them real pretty quick and try to keep them moving along. In your mailboxes today, you received the Recommission's year-end report for 2013. Just in brief, so that it's a part of the public record, we wanted to just review that for the public and for you guys, for the new council members and the mayor that were not seated last year, so you guys know what we did last year and where the money was spent and where we're looking to go in the future. 2013, I was named Chair of the Recreation Commission in the late fall of 2012. Took a few months to form my commission. In May of that year, we formed an official commission approved by the mayor and council of Naveek Johnson, Sally Harding, Jen Hicks, Brant Tru, Tim O'Brien, and Karen Saunders. In addition to those, six members and myself, we have a standing committee of about 70 other people that come regularly to meetings and are contributors from around the town and nearby communities. We began immediately by trying to provide what we called small victories, by providing immediate programming that we could start to try to improve the quality of recreation in the town. By far, probably the most successful of those was, well, not the most successful, but the most immediate of those was our Movies in the Park series. That was approved by the town. You have the numbers there. We provided seven movies in total, three we officially paid for through Swank Movie Services of Chicago. The other four, we did very quietly and as a beta test to make sure that the process is going to work. I highly recommend in the future that we budget to pay for all of our movies as Swank is notoriously litigious and very good at ferreting out when people are showing movies as a public entity. And they have the legal rights to take them into court over that. So, we did it last year on a very small scale, just to test it out. The numbers met out that it was successful enough to continue the program. We strongly recommend that in the, as, again, we budget out for the full year. The seven movies we showed last year were Brave, Spider-Man, Grease, Ozzy Great and Powerful, Day at the Races, Remember the Titans, and Beetlejuice. On three of the events, we had extracurricular activities. We had a live appearance by Spider-Man at one event. We had classic cars come out for Grease. And for the Day at the Races, which was the Mark Brothers film, we had a live stage show beforehand. The attendance varied from show to show, but overall, by any regards, it was a successful program that we would like to see continued.
How much is it per movie?
It ranges between $175 and $350, depending on the currency of the movie and how new it is and how popular it is. Disney movies are arguably the most expensive almost always, but they're also the biggest draw. Just like any distribution dealer, regular theater, you pay based on what the movie is and what is. We could do an all 80's movie summer and cost us a lot less than we could if we tried to show Cars Two and Three D. We participated in the DCA's Fourth of July celebration. In August, we had, July and August, we had several meetings with Washington Park residents and put together a grant proposal to create a new playground in Washington Park and the existing town-owned property there that was formerly occupied by Swinpool. It's been property that the town has owned for many years but has sort of sat dormant. In meeting with the folks in Washington Park, we learned that there was a lot of hesitation in engaging the town and being concerned that what sort of program and facilities we bring there. But by meeting with them and working through the details, we found real common ground and found a way that we could provide service there. That grant was through Maryland Parks and Playgrounds, was for $174,000. We expect the results of that in the spring. Mr. Emmerich saw usually those April, May, usually?
I think March.
March. So, we just wait here from that as early as then.
What amenities did they end up wanting to have?
We went through a long, sort of laundry list of conceptizing what we could do there. The Washington Park project, which you guys should have on file, if you don't already, I can forward it to you again. But for the record, it was, we're going, the grant application had us taking the existing dilapidated basketball court, removing it, turning that block top into a handicap parking spot, and then pushing a new half-court basketball court back farther away from the road and away from the pumping stations there, adding a small pavilion, big enough for about a family of 20, and then a accommodatingly small children's play area, piece of equipment. And nothing big, nothing to draw huge crowds. And then a walking track around the entire property for handicap accessibility.
And lighting.
And some, and security lighting, yeah. And grading the roads so that you can actually get parking space there. It's a very small, it's not, it's a little bigger than a pocket park. It's a lot smaller than a full-size, you should bring the whole town here, recreation facility.
I think I've been back there before.
There's, it's just something that, as town-owned property now, as a recreation committee, it was one of the first things we saw is that if the town owns this, we could do better here. And that was one of our first priorities as a committee, is looking at assessing what we already owned and what we could improve. And that was the, and because that's in an existing community where there are children, where there is neighbors directly adjacent to it, we saw that that was a great place we could start. We did address the folks in Coventry Farms at the same time, the Washington Park folks all came together, and we had real honest dialogues between them. There is still a wall between those communities, very, very real. We hope that ultimately, this sort of facility and process helps to ease those walls. And so, that was August. In September and October, we, through the advent of Citizen Champion Frank Hurst, we started the Chesta Ambachi League, which was, by any estimation, a wildly popular event for people that had no idea better. Averaging between 15 and 75 people a night, weekly ran down at Wilmer Park. Wilmer Park, for the first time in my recent memory, was full of people on an active weekly basis, having fun, playing games in a league format. And it was very popular. We hope to bring that back again this year. Councilman Stetson, you'll be happy to know that the income for the Bachi League was $950 and the cost overall was $950 for a nil impact on the town. The pumpkin patch we did in October... The Pumpkin Patch we did in October was again a very popular event, 125, 150 participants, lots of families and young people involved, pumpkin decorating and games and fun to do on the weekend before Halloween. And then from late November through today, we've been running a family game night in conjunction with Kent County Public Library and the Yellow Building at the library where we open the building up and have staffing there for families to come and play games, averaging anywhere between 20 and 25 families. Just folks getting together on a Friday night, especially in inclement weather, in the dark winter and getting a chance to meet each other and play together. We have a lot of families that do know each other and we have a lot of families that are meeting each other for the first time in an open, safe setting.
Excuse me, the income for the Bachi League, the $950, where did that come from?
Bachi League, we charged $20 per person to join the league. That got the, that paid for t-shirts, paid for balls, paid for odds and ends as far as what we needed as far as supplies for the league. So it actually worked out that what we took in, trophies and the like, what we took in actually just broke even on the league. We originally asked the Mayor and Council for a stipend of $300 or $400 for starters, just to seed money, and we weren't sure how popular the league was, and we didn't know what we'd take, but it ended up taking in, you know, within pennies on the dollar of the exact amount that it cost to run the league. So we would do that again this year and we ran that money through the town. People wrote checks to the town, we paid money to the town, and then the town went out and paid for, the town wrote checks for our t-shirts and for trophies and the like.
So you didn't take the $450 from the town?
We did, but it evened out. Like what we took in, what we took out was even money.
I'm going to make a safety comment. I know bachi isn't like a dangerous sport, but because this is a town event.
On the permission slip to sign the Bachi League, it releases a liability for anything the town needs.
Okay, that's good. I think we should also have like a inclement weather policy, like if you hear thunder in the area, you don't play bachi.
Well, we were all adults and Carla was fine playing in the lightning, so I was.
Whoa.
But she played through because the heavy stuff wasn't coming down for a while yet.
I think that's something to consider.
But it's absolutely on the onus of, it's an adult league, and as Commissioner, I sort of made the call being there, but I also took into account anyone who said, we think it's dangerous, we should go. And we stopped, we stopped any time we got dangerous. And that's usually within the onus of, if it's a children's league, it's definitely something to take into consideration, you want someone in charge. As an adult league, I mean, you also have people that are willing to play in the dark and just be playing and you trust that they're adults and they can trust themselves. But again, on everyone's permission slip to sign up for the league, to be a member of the league, you signed a liability waiver saying we were releasing a liability for anything that happens here. If anyone had tripped on a twig or caught in a divot in Wilmer Park and twisted their leg, the town was not liable for that. In the future, if we're running more involved leagues with more specific, you know, active recreation, it is within our bounds to look into insurance and making sure that we carry liability insurance for the land that we're using. And that amount is nominal. It's not worth a couple hundred dollars for the town to have general liability insurance for something like that. And we can also request that any teams that play carry their own liability insurance for that. That's fairly standard practice for using publicly owned land. Other questions about what we did last year before I move on to, real quickly about our general budget.
I have a question. The people that wore the blue t-shirt, how did they finish?
I have no idea.
You came in, I have the blue t-shirt, I wonder whether I want to wear it downtown and be proud of it or not.
I can tell you that their lip champion was Mission Imbocable, and they were in tan. That's what I can tell you. The blue, I believe, was the High Street Hurlers, and I don't believe, I don't remember how they did it.
I took a nap. I'm just kidding you.
Other questions about our program from last year? I will very, very quickly go through our budget review process for last year. 2013, the Recreation, for lack of a better word, Department of Chestertown was budgeted $26,150. This excludes expenditures on music in the park, $4,900, fireworks, $10,000, and Christmas lights and prizes at about $2,000. Those are rough estimates provided by the town. The vast majority of the recreation budget for Chestertown was spent on scholarships to Parks and Rec, Horizons, the Garfield Center, Public Library, summer programs, and Eastern Shore Heritage donations at $22,080. That is well-spent money and we're fully supportive of that, but it is by and large the lion's share of what recreation goes to, is to help support other town and county-wide programs that are already in place. Chestertown Recreation Committee expenditures, programs that we created in the last year, approximately $2,415, of which we brought in $950 on the Bachi League, for a total expenditures of about $1,400. Total for everything we did last year out of town pockets according to the budget breakdown. We spent $134 in advertising only. Elder other advertising was done through flyers that were donated or through press releases from our very apt and grateful press in Chestertown. Some estimated donations are listed there. I won't go through the details of those, but we had several committee members and organizations that donated to making the Recreation Commission possible. I will say, I will say that if the town wants to continue the Movies in the Park program, it is imperative that we invest in our own projection equipment. The equipment that we had last year was donated from another park, and I don't know how much longer that'll be. You have an estimate there of about $2,800 to purchase our own working screen projector sound system at all that we could use year-round and run out to the county or to anyone else that wants to use it and be a full-time asset for the town that would be better than us having to worry about borrowing from others. That brings us to our projects and plans for 2014. Next Tuesday, the 4th, in this room, we'll be having an open meeting for anyone in the public who wishes to express any concerns, plans, ideas about recreation in the town of Chestertown. It's an open meeting for the public to come in and give their opinions and ideas. We'll dedicate specific time for topics of concern and comment. In addition to programming, the Parks in Town, planning and comments, status of Gateway Park, we recently received an update on Gateway Park and will be conveying that to the public at that meeting as to where that project is standing at the current time and where we hope it goes. Long-term planning for Bailey Park, incorporation of recreation in the waterfront planning, which I think is something that you had just addressed, I think we want to make sure that the Recreation Commission is an active partner with that group as that goes forward. And then open suggestions for other programming facilities in town. My commission is a really dedicated group of people that has ideas and they're fairly diverse cross-section, but the best ideas we've gotten have come from Citizen Champions who have ideas, like the Bachi League, among others, that people would say, that'd be a great idea, why don't we do that? And our job for the town is to say, yes, we can. Is it a good idea? Is it fun? Does it bring, does it make things better here? It doesn't cost that much, why wouldn't we do that? We want to hear from the folks that are part of this community, in Chestertown, residents and even Chestertown proper, that you may be just a little bit outside, but you still have an impact here. You may have an idea, and we want to know that we can, you know, if you live in country or states, you know, you're not in Chestertown, but your kids certainly play here and they go to school here, and we want to know that you can have an impact too. So we want to make sure we're reaching out to all of those communities and drawing people in. So that's next Tuesday. We invite all the public to make sure they come out of that, and we would strongly ask that you guys, if you're available to be here. If not, Mr. Irsal, I asked earlier today, I asked you to look into the Mayor and Council if we can approve to have that meeting videotaped, and I'll let you guys discuss that further and work on the details if that's possible.
What time is the meeting?
We'll start at 6 o'clock here, and then 6 o'clock will start just to do, basically 6 o'clock will be a review of what I've done here, and then public comments starting at 6:30 to 8 o'clock. Facilities projects proposed for 2014. I think Lyra will hear a report on the completion of Phase 3 of the Rails Trails. That certainly goes within recreation. We're looking forward to that phase completing. The design and construction of the family facility at Washington Park, which I've alluded to, the completion of Gateway Park is an ongoing project that we're going to make sure that, we want to make sure that we're an active participant in. And the construction of a baseball field, Phase 1 at Kent County Middle School. We've had several parents and folks that have reached out and said they would love to see the return of baseball to this town. Chestertown, for those that aren't aware, is the only town in the county that doesn't have its own public baseball field for youth. It has, Rock Hall has three. Betterton, the smallest municipality in the state, has one. Chestertown has zero. Youth that want to play baseball in Chestertown are relegated to Colton Worton, their home field. Some of the folks do get to call the Chesterton Elks their home field, but Chesterton Elks is dedicated two miles outside Chestertown too. It's a personal goal of mine to bring baseball back to Chestertown. I think it's a sin that my hometown doesn't have a ball field for kids to play on. So those are things that we're going to be talking about next week, but those are also projects we're hoping to go. You all should have had, received in your email boxes, a proposal that we have for the Kent County Middle School project, pre-review. We are awaiting your opinions and impact on that and ideas about that. I'll be presenting to the Kent County Board of Vegetation on the 10th, because that is their land. So our first impetus is to use the historic grounds for baseball in Chestertown. If for some reason the county and the board is hesitant about that, we'd like to explore other lands. Bailey Park certainly has ample lands for a ball field. Ideally, we'd like to try to bring it back to where it was already and use an existing field. Because we feel that if we can bring baseball back to the middle school, we can use Bailey Park as a more of a multi-use facility and make it a campus setting where you actually have two sports in a section of town and not have to tie them all up in one piece of land. But again, you have before you that proposal, and we are anxious to hear your input on that. Programming proposals for 2014. We'd like to expand movie night. Make movie night as a more successful, we'd like to do it on a more regular basis, do it twice a month instead of once a month. Start it earlier and on concise times, it gives us a little more consistency and makes it a better program. The Bachi League will be back in the spring, and we already have people waiting in line for that. They'd like to run two programs there, and we may even expand it two nights pending registration for that. That's how popular that event was. We've had other ideas like a kickball league and adult wiffle ball league. Any number of adult co-ed leagues have been kicked around, and we hope to be able to expand those this year as registration and interest merits. And again, that'll be a big part of our meeting next week, to take ideas and get into the different things. And finally, programming-wise, we'd like to expand the family festival events to become quarterly. Pumpkin Fest was a huge success, did not cost that much money. We'd like to do similar, small, in-town events, family-based, seasonally, spring, summer, and winter. Take a day and do a, you know, a seasonally-based event to grow that all year long and grow those on weekends that we want to generate people to come downtown and spend the day there. Lastly, the Recreation Commission is working on a comprehensive plan. Overall, designing and construction of a long-term plan for parks and recreation for the entire town, using all awards, available property, and all potential property. Looking beyond just what we already own and looking at pieces of land that we could possibly own to really draw an overall plan for the town, what this town could be. Again, looking to other towns like Verlan, like Centerville, like even other towns in our county and see what they've done to try to make a bigger plan for recreation in our town. One of the reasons the Recommission was formed is because we are woefully lacking in facilities, and we can do better. Even based on the size of the town, the population, the budget, we're behind on what other towns they're like us are as far as what they offer. And one of the major concerns, I know you heard this when you ran, and Lynda, you heard this when you ran, and I heard this when I ran for office, was that people want something to do with their kids. They want a reason to look at the town, say, well, there's stuff to do here, and that's a big draw. So we want to make sure that we're looking at other towns and figure out what it is we need to create, and we're working on creating a long-term vision and a full plan so that we're not taking a piece of land that we happen to own and deciding, well, we should do this here because we happen to own it. And it happens now, we can do it right now. We want to look at a long-term vision, say, these are the lands that in five years, we should acquire this piece of property if it's still available, and this is what should go here. And these are the things that will draw families and draw people, and adults and of all ages, young and old, to be active participants in the town. In doing that, we want to collect input from multiple citizen groups and stakeholders, and then we want to revise the recreation budget to include programming, facilities, and construction, and upkeep and planning. Right now, our recreation budget is, as I said, is $26,000, and $22,000 of that is spent on things that are not done by the town. It goes in the scholarships and program, which is desperately needed by the kids in this community that use them. I personally reviewed the scholarship program at, for our folks at, that go to the summer program in Worton, and it's a great program and those kids need it, and those kids are really being serviced by that, so I think it's a huge positive. But I think we also need to look and say we maybe need to have a more apt budget than $26,000 for doing upkeep of facilities and having a capital gains project, so we know that every year we're going to put $5,000 into building something new or upkeep of something new. So that money is set aside specifically for recreation, and right now, we don't have that as a written part of what the town's budget is, and that's something we want to move forward, try to work with you and work with these groups to make sure that we can find the right numbers to go in there. That was a lot.
Okay, I want to ask you, how can you have a public meeting on this when it hasn't been presented to the school board?
That's not a public meeting on that, it's a public meeting on anything about recreation in the town.
You haven't had a public meeting with the school board?
No, and it very specifically says that we have no pending approvals from the school board whatsoever. It's only a suggestion.
Okay.
It is suggested property and only, and a suggested project that we will be hoping to get support for. If it doesn't get traction from the school board, we'll move on from it. But that was our first idea.
Fireworks comes out of the hotel tax that is not under the Recreation Commission?
Again, I was given a line item budget that said.
No, because I specifically made a motion last year for that to come out of the hotel tax so that Marty wouldn't complain anymore about it coming out of the taxpayers' pockets.
I told you before, I love fireworks, I just don't think we should charge everybody in town.
And then the Chris.
And Councilman, that's why I specifically said that, what I concluded my budget was exclusive of those things from the town.
So how do you include that in the $26,000?
It does not include in the $26,000.
The $22,000?
It does not include in the $22,000.
It excludes.
It excludes those.
It makes you look like you have a bigger budget than you have.
No, it says excluding Music in the Park, fireworks, and the Christmas lights program, which totaled $17,000. My general recreation budget is $26,000.
And the $10,000 scholarships have been given to the kids for years?
That's right, and we are in full support of this.
Thank you.
Hey, James, are you available on the 4th?
None of us are.
Bill asked, I don't know how well this has been advertised, but I'm asking him if the council is going to say he can film it. We need to know he's available.
Sorry, 6.
You think this has been advertised well enough that people out there know?
These guys, I sent releases to them.
None of us can come because that is the night of the Eastern Shore, Maryland Municipal Late Dinner.
All the more reason to record.
Yep.
All the more reason to record it.
My comment on the baseball field, I like baseball, and I totally agree with you, we need more amenities for kids. I ran on that as part of my platform. I would say I would reserve my comments on your funding request until you've gotten it through the county.
Absolutely, and we only want feedback from you guys as far as whether you think it's a positive thing. Go forward. We understand that the steps are in place, and I made it very clear, I think in my email to you all, and I made it clear to anyone I spoke to about it when we had a meeting about it two weeks ago here, and we discussed it as our first meeting here, is that we are presenting this. And as we go, we present, and I'm presenting to whomever will listen right now with the understanding that it doesn't go anywhere until the school board and the facilities people at the school decide that it's something that they want. But the more people that think it's a good idea, the better it is taking that in the school board.
When's the school board meeting?
Yeah, I think you should push that share of blame with no baseball in Chestertown. You have a middle school with all the students, all the students in middle school in this county go to that middle school and there's no baseball diamond. That doesn't make sense at all.
And Councilman, that's what we're.
They had one for years and years.
They had three.
Fact, they had two.
Three.
And then they just disappeared because they.
And they disappeared largely because youth sports is cyclical. Parents age out and they transfer around, and sports, our sports in general are cyclical unless there is a municipality or an organization that is working to maintain them. We've seen this in almost any aspect of youth sports or facilities. Sadly, I will address this only briefly, this is in large part what happened to the This is in large part what happened to the playground at Garnett. Garnett was built with a lot of community support. A lot of us were there as a part of it to build it. And for many years, it was well-maintained and actively used by the parents and the children that built it. And as those parents and kids age out, the next generation, if they're not understanding that they have to be a part of that ongoing maintenance and that process, that fades away. And the county is within their rights to say, "Well, no one's doing this anymore. It's aged out, no one's doing it, so we're just going to let it go fall out." That's what happened to the playground at Garnett, is that that facility needed work, and it was a more problem-solving solution for the county to raise it and build what they built there. And frankly, I, as a citizen, can't fault them because that's a county decision to do what they think is the best interest of their facility without a citizen group rallying to do that work. What we're proposing with baseball is to try to restore some of that trust between the town and the county. Baseball is a very basic facility. It's mostly dirt and some fencing. But it builds a level of trust between what we hope to build as a town-based facility, a county-based facility, and a school board-based facility, that we can rebuild that bridge by saying, "We're going to be in here for the long haul. We're going to help you do maintenance. We're going to be a part of the solution and build facilities that we all use together." That the town doesn't stand alone from the county, it doesn't stand alone from the school district. We can all build in Chestertown, we can build shared facilities and build that relationship back up. One of the reasons we looked at baseball to do that is simply because it is a fairly low investment. The most expensive part of a baseball field is the dirt. After that, it's a lawnmower and a dedicated groundskeeper, and really, can you maintain it from there? But it's something that shows, something that looks like something. A multi-use field, unfortunately, when you take the nets down, doesn't show all year round. A baseball field shows that it's a working facility. And we felt that we could build a bridge there. And then in two years, maybe build another baseball field, or in five years, work to restore a real, a real working playground for kids in this town. And do that maybe on county land, that we can build that bridge with that understanding of trust again. Because the conversations that we've had privately and speculatively with people in the community is that that trust isn't there between the town and the county. By no fault of anyone's specific, but just that's the way things have developed over the course of 20 or 30 years. And we want to work, find facilities that can restore that trust.
Well, go present to the county and then let us know.
Absolutely. If you guys have any questions, of course. For instance, Mr. Mayor, you specifically asked me when you looked at it, why we couldn't use the existing backstop that was there. It's because where that backstop is, it faces into the garden. And so if you replace the baseball field as-is, you'd be hitting fly balls into the victory garden there. So that's why. Those are the sort of things that we want to give you guys in advance, so that as we go to the school board, as we go to the counties, we go to these different organizations, we want your feedback to make our presentation stronger.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Anything else?
Before he leaves, is it okay for the videographer to film the event on the 4th of February?
I don't see why not.
Okay. Your outreach is good enough that you have a representative proud there.
Great, I hope so, too. I will hope for the press to help us do it. Thanks, Councilman.
Okay, next we have Nancy McGuire from DCA.
Mayor and Council, it's now after nine, and if you don't mind, with your permission, I'll just come back for the next meeting.
I give you permission.
Thank you.
Well, the War of 1812.
It's important. Big bucks. Town management report. That, and first thing on my report is this delegation here in the front row, the War of 1812 Committee, the Cox Field Committee. And I called them earlier to say it might take a little longer to get to this part of the meeting, so kept Steve awake so far, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and talk about the War of 1812. And it's important to first talk about the volunteers who have been working on this project since 2008. So it's been a really long war, but we are coming to, we've had some excellent events and programs, and all coming to Cox Field, which is really exciting. But I want to introduce Kevin Hemstock, who is the chairperson of the county-designated 1812 Committee, the Cox Field 2014 Committee. Steve Frohawk, who has been with us, gosh, Steve, since 2008.
No, it was right after Yorktown.
It feels like it.
The war coming.
Yes, it does. And Nancy McGuire has been an incredible help and also wears her DCA hat along with Kristin Owen. These guys are going to be incredible partners with the Cox 2014. Got Michelle Wood here from the Tourism and Economic Development Office. Our office is kind of the anchor for everything. Oh, and I'm not going to forget Mark. And this is Mark Dubin. And I will talk about the Eastern Shore militia a little bit more, but Mark Dubin, along with John Wyman, have built a Maryland Eastern Shore militia. And it's been, it's been an incredible year for you guys. We started out with a goal of 15 men and creating a lending library along with the men, but I'll get into that a little bit more. But basically, we're talking about Cox Field. So quiz time. What is the date? Because it is exactly, to the day, 200 years later. I mean, we couldn't, we could not have gotten luckier if we would have tried. So it is, write this down, everybody, August 31st, 2014, exactly 200 years to the day, we will have a reenactment at Cox Field, the most well-preserved battlefield of the War of 1812 on the east coast. So in addition to that, though, we will be tying in Chestertown. And it's real important because Chestertown is, can play a major role, and I'll get into what we're planning with Nancy and Kristin's help as well. It's also important to mention, this goes all the way from feds to the town level, to even the Daughters of the War of 1812. We are working with the National Park Service, the state Star Spangled Banner 200. We're working with General Atkins's office at the state level. On the regional level, Eastern Shore Consortium, as well as the Eastern Shore militia. The county, the county has designated a county committee, the Cox Field 2014 Committee. And then we've had the Friends of Kent County War of 1812 Committee working on other events through the years leading up to now. And then, of course, the Daughters of the War of 1812, the Kitty Knight chapter. Ms. Jean Mulford has been coming to all of our meetings, and they have been extremely supportive. But I wanted to mention, the War of 1812 was a three-year conflict, because people always say, "Well, wait a minute. Why are we having a commemoration in 18, 2014?" That's 1814, not 1812. It was a three-year conflict between the U.S. and Great Britain, which began with the Declaration of War by Congress in 1812 and ended by a peace treaty in 1815. Nearly 6,000 American lives were estimated to have been lost during the result of the conflict. The Chesapeake Campaign was one of the major theaters of the war, spanning from the spring of 1813 to the winter of 1815. The last known engagement of the conflict occurred in Dorchester County on February 7th, 1815, with the capture by the Maryland militia of the H.M. Schooner Dauntless, a British tender. So that Chesapeake Campaign that I mentioned, our group needed to go to the state because they created what they called Chesapeake Campaign Events. And we wanted to be designated as a Chesapeake Campaign Event for that from a marketing standpoint. We had three of our events designated as Chesapeake Campaigns, and some of you may have actually been to a couple of these. The Legend of Kitty Knight and the Glenna Dogwood, which was May 2013, excellent event if you hadn't, if you didn't get there. In it Mitchell House, Cox Field Remembered was also 2013, August 30th, and September 1st. And then Battle of Cox Field. What's the date?
August 31st.
Thank you. And Chestertown will be August 30th. So another project in the War of 1812 is called the Star Spangled Banner National Historic Trail. You're very familiar with that because you have a gateway kiosk right here at our visitor center, the three-panel kiosk. There is another gateway panel at Kitty Knight. We are the only county that has two gateway panels. We will have an additional seven interpretive panels throughout the county talking about War of 1812 sites. And one of those, you already know, is the Chestertown Memorial Park. Those panels will be going into the ground as soon as it falls. So we're waiting for that, and then the National Park Service will be here, and we'll let you know when that's all going to happen. Another project, and when I talk about these projects, all of these projects have been supported by grants, by National Park Service, and also by the Star Spangled 200 at the state level. And one of those is the militia that I spoke about earlier. This 15-man militia and lending library. Mark, how many men do you have now signed up for the Eastern Shore militia unit?
Probably about 24.
24. The goal was 15. So we have equipment, uniforms, for 15 men that will be in a lending library. Our own Historical Society of Kent County is the administrator of this grant. So we're pretty much finishing up, aren't we, Mark? And we'll be working on a final report and helping the Historical Society. They will be the first to be the lending library. Basically, what that means is 15 men who want to be part of this unit that may not be able to afford their own uniform and equipment will be able to borrow it as these guys appear at different events. They have appeared, gosh, Mark, how many, how many in 2013 did you go to?
Almost 10.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you guys, you guys did at least one a month.
Yes, some multiples.
Some multiples.
All there as one, yes.
So 2014, they have a hefty, hefty schedule. Chestertown is on their schedule several times. They'll be back in Chestertown, March and April, doing a spring muster drill workshop. They'll be back in Chestertown in May 24th and 26th for the tea party. They will be back in Chestertown, when in August?
30th.
30th. And then, of course, they will be at Cox Field August 31st. And they will also be appearing in different places in Kent County as well, Georgetown and Rock Hall. And then all throughout five counties, because this is a five-county grant that we did. So the tourism offices from Kent County, Queen Anne, Caroline, Dorchester, and Talbot County provided the match for this Maryland militia and lending library. So where these guys will go are all of those five counties. And in fact, you've been invited outside of these counties, and they will represent us well. And if you've seen them, they are impressive, very, very impressive. So that leads us to Chestertown on August 30th. In progress, but thank heavens for Nancy and Kristin. They are pulling together some incredible, incredible things that will be happening. Mark and his guys have agreed to do an encampment on Friday night into Saturday morning. Parade is planned with all of the reenactors that will be at Cox Field. They will do a parade. We may get some of the dragoons, possibly. The town, we hope to get the, all of the business people engaged in this. So whether that is the decorating of windows, or we know that we're going to have the curb appeal, do red, white, and blue flowers throughout town. So it'll have an 1812 feel by the time we hit August. And Nancy or Kristin, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes. I have to impress upon everyone how important this is. This is not just a small event. This is not just Maryland people. They're coming from Canada. And so they're probably in that parade, there might be 100 reenactors. And it's putting us on a map that really, in a way, it's not that we don't deserve it, but we could have been lost. Because the militiamen came from here, but they, no events happen in Chestertown. It's always been the graciousness of Bernadette and Kevin and the rest of them that they've invited Chestertown to participate. And then we had to figure out a way, how can we actually participate? Thank goodness for Mark. So we will have an encampment, and there'll be time for people to ask questions and so forth. And we'll be entertaining them, and then we'll have the parade and flag raising and laying of wreaths and so.
Where do they camp?
Well, I can't tell you. They're only going to be, they're not going to be the 100, because, well, some, most of them will be at Cox Field. We're going to have a small, maybe the 25, which is very manageable, but it's very nice that we have that set up on Friday night. So we'll have time to be able to enjoy them in Chestertown. And then the rest of the reenactors will join us on Saturday morning. But this is a big event. I mean, there are people coming from Canada. This is, this War of 1812 is a very ser, and the people involved are very serious.
Oh, I know. You can't tell us where the 25 people are going to camp?
Well, I've already asked.
Is it TBD, to be determined?
Well, no, it's very much on, we're working on it. But Wilmore Park is our first choice because it's large and people gather, but there's a 5K run with 200 runners on Saturday morning. So that sort of meant it would be total chaos, reenactors and runners. It would've been a terrible mess. I've asked one place, and they've said they can't imagine that we couldn't be there. There will only be about maybe six tents and 25 reenactors that'll actually spend the night. And as soon as I know, I will.
Yeah, so we will keep, we'll keep you.
I didn't mean to pry.
No, not at all.
Bernadette, you might mention, too, because I have another event that weekend. Our hotel rooms are almost being sold out under us for an event coming up in August. So it's really important to remember, all the rooms being filled, the restaurants being filled, and the town. This is really.
The multiplier.
It's huge. This will have a major economic impact on Chestertown and Kent County. You know, we have a $50 million industry there, and that has increased, back in 2001, that number was 27 million. And from that time to now, now we're up to 50 million a year in visitor spending in Kent County. So it's significant. And events like this have an extended effect because of the publicity that we're going to get. And when you're a Chesapeake Campaign designated event, one of the perks that comes with that is the assistance of the state in promotion. So we are on everything that they're doing as well. So our event is listed there. So it.
One thing I would maybe recommend to the county Department of Tourism is, because I was at the Kitty Knight event last year, it was really cool. And from what I understand, I couldn't make it to the Cox Field event last year, but it was very well-attended. You know, we do this thing every year for Tea Party. That's kind of a cool thing, you might be able to build a festival around every year.
Sure, sure.
Keep that in mind.
Yes. And in fact, the Chesapeake Campaign event, the In it Mitchell House, Cox Field at In it Mitchell House, we hope that that will be an ongoing event. I mean, obviously, it breaks this year because the event will actually take place, and that leads me right in, thank you, Mayor. That leads me right into Cox Field. Tulip Forest Farming Corp. is the owner of Cox Field. Richard Van Stock is the person, is one of the owners that we are working with. They have dedicated 35 acres for us. They are taking that out of production for us.
Wow.
Yes. I mean, it's huge. It's a huge deal. And so that's 35 acres that they have dedicated for us to put on a reenactment. And let me tell you, when you're working with the Steve Frohawks and the Kevin Hemstocks and the Mark Dubins and the John Wyman's of the world, this reenactment is so incredibly important to make it as real as possible. Probably the only thing that we won't be able to accomplish is that the battle actually took place at 2:00 in the morning. But other than that, it would really be something to see. And so basically, what, how that event will start will be with a wreath-laying and flag-raising ceremony. And if any of you have been, we have had these 2012 and 2013 on the anniversary date. General Atkins and a Royal British Marine Lieutenant Colonel Colby Caron has done the commencement. commencement for us. And it is, if you, it's an incredibly moving ceremony. And you just absolutely want to make sure that that's on your calendar. So that will be happening. We will have stone panels that have been ordered and, working again with the owner, Richard Van Stock, an American stone panel and a British stone panel that will be laid at the foot of, on the hill of the two flagpoles. There's an American flag and a British flagpole there. And the American stone will basically continue the story, tell a little bit more of the story of Cox Field. We have a monument, but this will continue that story, expand on that story a little bit. The British stone, what do you think, what's your guess that will be on the British stone? Well, let me give you a hint. Not one American was killed at this battle, but 14 British men were killed. Two of them were officers. One was the commanding officer, Sir Peter Parker. They took him and pickled him. So if you can say Peter Parker was pickled 10 times.
Pickled Peter Parker.
All kidding aside. All right. So they took him because he was an officer and sent him back. They really did pickle him. Okay. So there was another officer that was buried there. So they came back and they did take that officer back as well. But there are 12 soldiers still buried at Cox Field. And the British have not memorialized Cox Field up until now, and they intend to do that on August 31st, 2014. We have an invitation to the British ambassador. We are hopeful that something may come from that. We have an invitation to the governor. We hope that something will come from that.
Do they know exactly where they're buried or are there marked stones, graves, or?
No. But there was an archaeological dig done by State Highway.
I saw that in the paper, but I don't know whether they found any bones or not.
They found a tremendous amount of material. They found buttons, they found musket balls, they found hundreds and hundreds of pieces. And that also is another piece that will be here in Chestertown. The Historical Society is trying to get a grant from the program that they can build an exhibit at the Boardley Center to display some of these archaeological artifacts. So they did, though, pinpoint the battle. So when we went out with these guys to talk about the reenactment, the archaeologist was there with us. And she was able to actually help pinpoint the positions and the movement of the battle. So it really will be authentic and accurate. A presentation was made to the DuPont Company. DuPont owns the property adjacent to Cox Field. So as we were planning, we needed to think about parking because we expect at least 5,000 people to this event on Sunday. A presentation was made to DuPont. Not only did they give a significant donation towards our grant cash match that we need to raise, we have about $20,000 to raise for our cash match. They gave a significant amount towards that cash match, plus they offered their field for parking. And again, they're taking that out of production. That's real dollars. And so DuPont is very excited to be part of this and have offered us a great deal of support. We will have music, food, living historians, we're working on another grant to do a walk-through time stations. We will have the reenactment, we will have an encampment of both the British and the American. So you can, the kids will absolutely love this. So we think that we've got a heck of an event being planned, not only for Chestertown on Saturday, August 30th, but also Sunday at Cox Field, August 31st. And, you know, we just, we appreciate any support that you can give us. And we'll be back to give you lots of updates. And is there anything else that anybody would like to add?
Just the one point, that General Atkins, at the beginning, said he wants the August 31st wreath-laying and flag-raising to be a continued annual event, and he will support it, and the British will too. So we'll get a general probably this year, but we can always get a Lieutenant Caron.
The DuPont Company has a direct linkage to the.
Yes, tell us about that.
The DuPont Company provided gunpowder for the American forces, including the militia here in the War of 1812. So they have a historical linkage to the battle itself because it was probably their gunpowder that was used by the American forces.
So do you need anything from us or you just want to let us know what's going on and then you'll ask us for stuff as needed?
I would like to make a motion.
Besides money, don't go ask people for money.
Money would be very helpful.
This is the second time that I've heard Bernadette's presentation. And they need money for the match. And because this is going to increase the revenue from our hotel tax, I make a motion that we give $5,000 to help your match grant. And that'll be matching with the county gave.
County give $5,000?
Yes.
The county's five times as big as us, but I'll go for 1,000.
Stop it.
Marty, the county, over the period of time that we've been doing these events, has given 19,000.
Oh, okay.
Pretty close.
But we're going to have an increased revenue in the hotel tax, and I think it should be given out to our visitors, should be given back to them. I've said this before.
Can we, seeing that the event is in August, don't we do our budget in June?
We can give it, when's the deadline for your match?
Well, in the fiscal year 15, budget would be absolutely fine. We need to have the match, I mean, we'll be paying for things as we go along. So July would be great, but as long as we have the match by the time that we do our report, which would be, you know, right after the event.
So do you need it in 14 or, I mean?
Yeah, no, we need it in 2014, but your fiscal year 15 starts July 1. So if it would make it more reasonable to do it that way, that would work for us as well.
Yeah, I mean, I want to support this for sure. I just, I wasn't expecting that at all, Linda.
Sorry.
You're like a total left fielder.
Thank you, Linda.
But, I mean, I think if you suggested that as part of the budgeting process, I would be.
And it comes out, but I wanted to make the motion for it to come out of the hotel tax. That way, it's not coming from our taxpayers, it's coming from our visitors who pay the hotel tax to go back to them.
Presumably, the town will have to provide some support services for the events in town. Police coverage, some, you know, trash pickup barriers, you know, like we do for all the.
That's normal. We do that all the time anyway.
It's interesting, Linda, that you complain about us never having a budget that's lined out. We have, getting ready to have budget hearings, that's the time to bring up this money. Is it the time of the budget?
I would want it to make the commitment. I wouldn't try to make the commitment to Bernadette.
Wait till budget time and then discuss it at that time.
I won't forget it.
I will put it tentatively into the budget for you. I'll pencil it in for you.
But it's coming out, do you understand it's coming out of the hotel tax?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
With the fireworks.
With the fireworks.
That's your favorite one.
Then you can't complain. You shouldn't be able to.
The hotel tax is an endless fund for us. It's not. There's a finite amount of money in there.
Might be up this year as visiting increases.
Absolutely. That 5,000 people coming down.
Why don't we hold our internal figuring until we have our private budget?
Nancy?
Thanks.
But I want to support you, but again, I think, I would recommend, Linda, that you bring it up during our budgeting process so that it's not such a random kind of surprise. But I would tentatively say, if the money is there, I would be happy to support.
I would just like to say that I have spent four years with economic development on my mind. We're talking about having audiences with the businesses, and we sit here and we're so short-sighted when we have an enormous opportunity to market Chestertown. And I think it's very short-sighted and me. If we don't give some money to this, everyone else is giving it, and they see the value in it, and if we don't see in the value in it, shame on us.
I'm not, I never said.
We're not saying we're not going to give them the money, it's just a question of when you do it. This coming in during the year from time to time, and people ask for money and so forth, we have a budget hearing, and that's when that should be considered. Because if you give it all away before the budget time, then you don't have it to budget. So it makes sense to me, when you're talking about giving money away to budget, it's like Bill's Recreation Committee. Last year, we giving money from periods from time to time because he needed it. I think he'd be much happier if he had a budget to work with. And that's what budgets are for, so.
Well, this is the right time of the year to tell us what your needs are. If it works out perfectly, we're going right into early budgeting.
Great.
When you say you're going to put it in as like a placeholder.
I'm going to do two things. I'm going to put it in tentatively, I think it's a great idea, and I'm also going to, we're going to show the revenues that come directly from the hotel tax.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
It's not like they're kept in a compartment. I was going to bring a box in there, $200,000 on it.
No, I would like a separate budget for it, too.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, this is exciting.
It is.
I just wanted to thank you all for considering this, whether it's now or whether it's during the budget session.
Sure.
It's just, we're very grateful just for you thinking.
No problem.
You'll get your money, but I think if there's time to do it, not just piecemeal when somebody comes in, so.
Well, also, I think we should be forewarned when people are expecting us to make a commitment of money at a meeting.
Were there any dollars in the War of 1812?
It's time that we gave you an update because, you know, we've been working on things and we want to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing and keep you on track with us, and especially with DCA and having events on Saturday in Chestertown, because that's going to be very exciting for us. Yeah. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You know, another way we could help is through our website. It's free advertising.
It is. I mean, we have grants.
Did you hear that, Bernadette?
Well, I'm sorry.
I said another way we could help you for free is through our website, which we're planning on. I hope that we ban this spring.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm going to shorten this report up if I can. Did everyone get a copy of the Surf and Turf Restoration?
Surf and Turf. Surfing in the fountain, no?
Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yes.
I don't get a copy.
Some time ago.
Yeah, I sent them out, thought, but.
I didn't bring it.
Here's copies tonight. Didn't say what he was going to do. We talked about the idea of it at the last meeting. If you want to bring it up the next meeting, that's fine, too. You have your paper copies. I don't think we're going to be planting in frozen ground.
No.
But I do think we have to act on it at our next meeting, which is very close at hand, anyway. So I'll move on. Sam, I know that you and Case met with the SHA, really some good things happening with Rail Trail 3. We have, the contract group built Phase 1 and 2, will hold the same prices for 3, and the estimates for that are around $110,000 for leg number 3. I think we'll have sub-base issues and the rail contractor end up being about $20,000 more to go with land issues. Case is working through the permits. The other successful part of that meeting was the state dedicated more land in the roadway itself for a wider sidewalk, more like eight feet. So I still think the bridge is a great initiative, and we're going to check it out as far as, if we get to the bidding phase, we're going to check that out to see what it would cost. But this was great news. And not only that, but they linked it to the 514 pedestrian, I think they're trying to make, it's a bad pun, great strides in linking 514 with that area and Phase 3. Did you want to say anything about it, Sam?
They also talked about, you know, slowing traffic down a little bit sooner, rather than, you know, you had before the 25, we passed the park, moving that 25 mile an hour back a little bit, so traffic starts slowing down before they get to the park. And then, of course, increasing the sightline as well, because, I mean, their intention was to also put that crosswalk over High Street. So slowing down the traffic, increasing the sightline, and then, of course, the lighting at that corner as well. So, I mean, in terms of making just a safe place for pedestrians to cross the street, I mean, it certainly looks like they're taking all the right steps and making all the right initiatives to make sure that happens. So I was very impressed with some of the preliminary stuff that came out.
They seemed a lot more into it than before. It's almost like the fruits of earlier efforts with 514 and the study that they did. They see this thing happening, and they've connected it fairly well to the roundabout, too. I think they've had some real experience doing it. So I won't belabor that. I just think it's, there's headway being made. I think the permits are almost in for the Phase 3, and we should be getting a contract, a grant contract from Bike Ways for that $168,000 grant that we picked up in June. So it all looks like it'll be in budget, even with some pretty major fill there on the last part of the rail trail as it approaches Brooks's Tagway there. So, and another trail connection that Sam brought to my attention, I had gotten an email a few months ago from someone named Brad Holloman, if he's here to speak up. He thought that Prospect Street, the top part of Prospect Street as it goes to Dixon Valley would make a nice connection point for the rail trail. This is like a dead-end street near college maintenance, and because really the way the rail trail valley is going through the campus, it's very hard to get onto it at grade. I talked to Dixon Valley, I talked to Washington College, they're both gung ho about it. Our masonry crew would like to do it, so I think we're all systems go. And we can actually do, some of this is winter work because there's quite a bit of vegetation that's grown up there. If there's an abrupt grade change, we're going to swing the entranceway around so that we'll get to a grade that's handicapped access. All in all, I think that was a great idea. It looks like it's something that we can do. Did you hand out the Planning Commission annual report?
I did, everybody had one. It's so exciting.
Well, the thing is, they worked, they worked so hard. If you look at all the hours they put into working on the comprehensive plan, and I have to say that it looks to me like building permit applications for almost every type of activity are picking up. I can see the preliminary plans, concept plans, coming back for reconsideration on plans that were maybe five, six, seven years old. Of course, we remember them as the head of the Planning Commission. So I think it looks good, if you saw the funds on hand and in the bank, that's probably a bit higher than we have normally at this time of year, because we have things like $200,000 that we're going to be spending on road, things that are in the budget, road repairs this spring. The last thing I wanted to talk about is, we have this thing, when we get ready to take the covers off the parking meters downtown, there's always a hue and a cry, like, hey, are you taking them off? Can't we have a little bit longer? And it occurs to me that this is a fresh council, and a couple of council people told me that they want it reconsidered. This last week, the meter monitor accidentally took them off. I thought I'd asked her not to, but we only give warnings while they're off. Also, we were aided by snow, and it is very hard to think about giving tickets in that. But how does the council feel about this issue? It's plain as day, it's either you extend it or you don't. You know, the meters are probably something some of you campaigned about, and it's yours.
Are we still have?
Are we, are we still have free parking up until 10:30?
Yes, that, that 10:30 thing has worked out well.
Okay. Didn't want to bring something until I finish my survey, but...
Okay.
So did we want to go with 3 until 10:30, and the meters go back into effect? Until further notice?
This is always a hardest decision.
Well, I have a couple of comments in that. One is, if, if this tourist boom that we're trying to develop with our waterfront and so forth, don't be too quick to get rid of our parking meters, because I could see people coming from the western shore and getting here at 7:30 in the morning, parking their car on High Street, and that space is blocked for the next 12 hours while they go do their thing, or whatever it may be. There was a time when parking downtown was just that, a very premium. You rode around for a long time to find a parking place. And hopefully, that will happen again.
That would be a great problem to have.
It's, it's, it doesn't hurt the people, but, and we got the cheapest parking meters in the world. If you don't think so, go to New York and see what it costs.
Well, it costs to us more.
New York's a little bigger than that.
Or Baltimore, Washington, or Napolis, for that matter.
Can we continue this, I mean?
Plus, we have a parking meter made.
To have it free until 10:30 and continue this until next?
All it takes is a motion. Sure.
Okay, I make a motion that we have free parking until 10:30 a.m.
And then what?
Until, until further notice?
Yeah, until further notice. So we gotta re-discuss this issue?
With the meters being active after 10:30? So would the meters be active after 10:30?
Yeah, she'll ticket after 10:30.
Okay. Is there a second?
Into what time? 10:30 into?
4 o'clock it goes right now, right?
Whatever time.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just think it's dumb, but okay.
Come on, let's keep it cordial, Marty.
I think we can afford a nickel or 10 cents to drink their coffee.
I think that's all I have. The NDA, the NDA thing with, you mentioned the three charrettes, they'll work well for the other things, and that's all I, that's all I have. All right, let's go to ward reports, starting with Ward 1.
Well, a couple of the things I wanted to raise have already been brought up. We had a lot of residents in the first ward in the historic area very concerned about the situation at White Hall. And I came in to talk to Bill, and I now know that I have at least, there are at least three buildings in the first ward that are in the hands of banks that have been neglected, and where we have serious flooding in the basements and potential, really structural problems. I'm not sure what the town can do to bring pressure on these bank owners to take better care of their properties, but I would hate to see, you know, a lot of deteriorating buildings. So I, I would like to see us look at getting a list of the properties in town that are being held by banks. And I don't know whether there's any way we can bring pressure on them or keep an eye on them somehow, but I gather that you can tell from the utility usage data, you know, what places are not occupied. So I'd like to see us think about that a little bit more. The situation at, at White Hall is really a tragedy, and we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs that are required there, and it would have only taken a minimal amount of attention to have prevented that. Mr. Sykes already mentioned obliquely a sewer backup problem on Campus Avenue. I happen to know the owner of the property well, but it appears to, one, one possible cause is, you know, inappropriate disposal of items down the drains, and we'll have to see what happens there. The complete issue is not clear yet. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, I felt that when we got one mild break and some sun and some salt got a chance to do its work, Campus Avenue was cleaned up. But the condition of Campus Avenue, even 48 hours after the snowstorm, Campus and Philosopher's Terrace needed more snow cleaning attention. That is a major access to the hospital, and it was really thick with, with snow the second day after the storm. And that was one thing I would, I was gonna come in and tell you about it, and by the time I got home later in the day, the sun had done its work.
I got phone calls, and we actually went out there, because someone from your ward called and said it was terrible. And I called JR, and by the time we talked, he'd already been out there again.
I think that's probably what happened.
But you're right, it's a major, with the middle school, and I know they're out of session, but it's a major repair.
Inherent point, and, you know.
Yep, especially.
Those were the things I wanted to bring up this week.
I do want to tell you that we've, we've put together some of the major houses that seem to have zero use, and, you know, this is, I guess we got used to not having ice cold winters. But this thing about a frozen vacant home, I mean, it's, it's so inexpensive to turn, have the water turned off if you're not going to be renting a house for several months. You can save yourself a lot of money. The White Hall thing, the restoration company was on it almost immediately. But we have one Maple Avenue property with an Olympic swimming pool in the basement right now. And I do, I do, I have found out what the problem was with PNC Bank. There's some sort of mortgage in lieu of foreclosure that has to be signed. And it's as simple as me trying to find the old owner and PNC Bank and, and get them to sign that, because the old owner walked away from it and, and has no interest in it whatsoever. So somehow, this has to get done, and we're gonna look for other properties that, that have that brand on them.
You know, that, that water problem is, for homeowners, can be handled pretty simply. I, I had a plumber come put a, a valve where the water comes into my house from the town in the basement. And I was away this last weekend. I just go down there and shut it off, pull the hot water plug, and it turned the faucets upstairs, the pressure's off, and it's taken care of. And I, my house is heated. But for the price of a plumber coming in, putting one of those in, you could save yourself an awful lot of money.
Now, they're good.
Even when you go on vacation, some of these people in your ward go to Florida for three months. All they have to do is turn that thing off and, and drain the water.
Cut your water off. All right, how about Ward 2?
Ward 2 is gonna be short and sweet. Thank you very much for getting the town to clean up the snow for the farmers at the market on Saturday, and they really appreciated it. Thank you so much for the speedy handicap spot at Stamps.
My pleasure.
That was really quick. And thank you for getting the maps in the lobby. There are stickies on the maps in the lobby of the waterfront, so people can make their, hopefully, positive comments on the sticky, so we get some input. It would be nice if, if we could get them on our website, too. And I just want to tell everybody, if they don't know, that Haglen Glass had won the 2013 Niche Award, and was a finalist in the 2014 Niche Award. This is given out by Niche Magazine, and last year, I remember, they not only received the award, but one of their pieces was given as a very prestigious award. And so they're located in the, I can still call it the Art Cave?
Breezeway.
Well, Art Cave Breezeway, but they have beautiful, beautiful glass. So congratulations to them.
All right, how about Ward 3? The most exciting thing to develop over the past couple weeks, what does that mean with the S H A that we talked about earlier? So it's just nice to see things coming to fruition, certainly. So, so that was exciting to be a part of. You know, no complaints about snow in my ward. You know, the crews did a great job, so I was, I was pleased with the conditions of Ward 3. The only issue was I know a lot of the sidewalks on, along High Street were, I mean, they weren't touched. And, I mean, I don't understand, is that up to the residents and business owners who own, I guess, their section of the sidewalk to plow?
It is. And I think it was Thursday, I asked Case to go out and, and sort of give me an idea of who hadn't gotten it. And it's everything from institutions to businesses, to, to defunct businesses, to, and it's just, it's very hard to get out there and start finding people when you're still digging out.
Right.
If we, if we're gonna have cold winters, we'll get better at this.
Right.
You know, it's just, it's, it's a lot to do to go. And some places where there's no meeting, and you throw the, the snow from the plow goes up on the sidewalk, it's very hard for that homeowner to get it off. But like I say, we'll, we'll get better at it.
We don't have Carol Gibbs anymore.
Well, we see the chronic ones, and we made some phone calls on Friday to some institutions where, and they said, well, they were actually getting to it that day, but still.
Right.
Salt wasn't working. It was too cold.
Is it 24 hours in the audience, in the ordinance, or 48?
Well, the trouble is that, yeah, it is. It's 24 hours of, I think it's 24.
But, I mean, and, and the biggest thing is, and, and especially with the, the trail connection, seeing how quickly that took place. And all it took was just a simple email from, what was his, his name again, who recommended that, the trail, the, the trail connection, excuse me, on Prostrex.
Oh, the hall, Brad?
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just as simple as, as emailing, picking up the phone, and calling your council person, and, you know, that's essentially what we're here for. So it was, it was nice. It definitely gave me a lot of confidence, coming forward, you know, just working with my constituents and, and, you know, bringing their, their particular concerns forward. And, and that's essentially why they elected us. So it was great to be able to participate in that. And, you know, essentially, this is, this is what we're here for, to work, to work for you all. So all of our contact information, our email is posted on the website, and get ahold of us. So that's it.
Just not, not too often.
As often as you...
From 10:30 to 4 o'clock.
So that's it for Ward 3.
All right, how about Ward 4, Marty?
Ward 4.
Oh, he's got an evil.
Just, you know, when we get into budget time, there are some things that I have in mind that we need to put into budget. If you've been out and looked at your roads lately, we're gonna have to do something major there, because they're all breaking ground.
Campus?
Yeah, just about every street in my, my ward, you see the cracks, the new cracks, and one of them. The other is, I'm just passing out a draft of the campaign finance reporting. I promised that I would do that. I certainly would not expect anybody to even do anything but take it home and read it, mark it up, decide what you think is good about it or what's not good about it, and sometime in a later date, as long as we get this thing in effect before the next election is what I'm interested. Now, I did put in there, there is in there a, a primary, but we couldn't have a primary until we changed our charter, I would think. But I thought this last time, we come close to having a primary. When you have seven people running for mayor, you could actually have somebody win with 20% of the vote.
That's right.
So maybe we want to look into that. But finance reporting is very important to me. So if each one of you would take a, a copy of this draft, take it home, and...
The next election...
It'll probably, yeah, it'll be, yeah. It'll probably put you to sleep, so if you're having trouble sleeping, you could just...
Perfect.
Everybody got one? You don't want one, Linda?
It hasn't come to work.
We didn't have enough.
By the way, I didn't, I didn't invent this whole thing. I did modify it a little bit, but it's taken off another, another town.
All right, anything else, Marty?
No. I'm happy to see that we're getting out of here probably close to 10 o'clock.
One more thing, is there, are there any comments or questions from the peanut gallery?
On the parking and the meters, part of my presentation was some ideas that the DCA has brought. So you'll hear them the next time. In the meantime, there's the survey that's done, and so forth. We'd like to be part of that conversation, because this is a solution that may be inexpensive and easy to do.
Okay. Sounds great. Yes, sir?
My name's Bob, and I live on Queen Street. I like the idea about the speed camera, the 255 tickets. Can we get one on a bridge coming into town? Because you take your light and you have to cross in that street.
We only, it's not a school.
I can tell you this, that the, the policy of the state highway, if you draw half mile circles around every school in town, you cover almost the whole town. But the state highway here is pretty adamant about how the, the school has to be directly on the state road. Now, don't ask me how Centerville put theirs everywhere, but that was in, because we thought on Washington Avenue, I wasn't thinking, Maple Avenue's pretty far from a school, but Washington Avenue with the middle school really wasn't. And, and they gave us a thumbs down so fast it made my head swim.
So is the state law that we can only have them within a certain distance of a school?
It's like a half a mile. But, but the state highway, so in other words, if you have a town street somewhere, and you think it's within that district that we showed when we passed the law, you could put the signage out and, and ticket people for going 12 miles or more over the speed limit. And it's a $40 citation. If they charge you 50, they owe you, they owe you some money back. But you have to be going more than 12 or more, and it has to be marked properly. And so, I mean, I think it was too tempting for Centerville to lay off of it. But anyway, those are the, and, and you hear tonight, you know, there are people who really don't like them. Though I have to say, we had years of letters about 291 speeding, especially when people had school age kids out there, and we heard about it all the time, and we, and we haven't after the cameras went out there.
I don't have any 291s.
I know, I know that the camera's there, right?
Once people know, but...
Yeah, they're like speed bumps. Some people want them, some people don't want them, you know.
Are you on, did you say Queen Street?
I'll tell you something about the state road.
Just crossing from Queen to Water.
Oh, that's awful, yeah. To cross across Maple Avenue is dangerous.
A little blinky light or something.
Yeah.
And there's very poor visibility.
It is a tough, tough one to get across.
Thank you. I don't want to keep this.
Well, thanks for bringing that up.
I live on Campus Avenue, and I don't know if it's my imagination or the fact that they're so large. I think some of the worst speeders are the school buses. I mean, they get sick of them or something, and they go wide, and, you know, it's kind of scary.
Chief, can we, can we sometime check that? Without, I mean, can we just check the speed of school buses sometime?
Yes.
Without getting in their faces?
I stepped in on 213 with a light, and they were making right turns during their run of the...
I mean, we have to trim every limb that, that sprouts just a little bit over the street when they touch school buses, so, yes. All right, so you'll check into that first, Chief?
I will.
Anybody else? All right, there's a doozy.
Make a motion when you turn.
Second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Goes.
That's my cloud.
Well done, Chris.